Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us for our Educators Town Hall. Tonight, we are talking to a group of educators and we're so happy that you guys could all join us tonight. We just want to recognize your hard work. Everyone at the ADA is so very proud of everything you've been doing with your boots on the ground, helping us get the newest generation of dental assistants out there. We know that it's been very difficult with the pandemic that's going on and we're hoping that this town hall tonight, we can get some good discussion going on, maybe how to make your life a little bit easier. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about data gathered from our educator survey that was sent out a few weeks ago. Natalie Kavetsky will talk about the drop in class sizes. We'll talk about the lack of hands-on experience due to online learning and Lisa Childers will be doing that. And then I will be speaking on infection control and student and staff safety. And finally, President Robin Rixey will be speaking on finding clinical sites in the pandemic world. So before we get started, let's just go through and we're going to have the panelists introduce themselves. My name is Sarah Stream. I am the ADAA Eighth District Trustee and I live just outside of Omaha, Nebraska right now. President Robin, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. Hi, my name is Robin Rixey. I'm the ADAA President. I've been in dentistry for 30, it'll be 31 years on September the 9th. I am currently a practice manager for a private practice dental office and love everything to do with ADAA and just really glad that you guys were willing to have us all on here today. So we look forward to answering your questions and if there's something we can't answer tonight, we will do our best to get that answer for you and get it out to you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Robin. Natalie, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Natalie Kavetsky. I'm a licensed dental assistant in Minneapolis, Minnesota. I am also a former educator and program director of a COTA accredited program and I still keep busy dealing with students rotating through our clinic, not only dental assisting, but hygiene and dental therapy also. Busy in dentistry, been a dental assistant for 28 years now and love every aspect of it.
Thanks so much, Natalie. Lisa, are you still with us? Would you like to introduce yourself? Awesome.
I'm still here. I'm Lisa Childers. I am the Ninth District Trustee for ADAA. I am a dental educator in a COTA program and this is my 14th year of teaching and I have been in dental assisting for 31 years.
Thank you, Lisa. And for those of you out there, you'll notice you can't see Lisa's smiling face tonight. She is in an area with some bad storms tonight, so we're trying to save some bandwidth and hopefully she won't lose internet completely. Before we get started with our topics, I just want to remind everybody of some house rules. We are happy to answer any questions that you might have during this presentation. So on your end, you should see a question box. If you want to type your questions into the question box, we'll be watching that question box throughout the presentation and we'll try to get everybody's questions answered for them. If we don't get to your question, there will be a slide at the end with some contact information. And if you have more questions, you're more than, we're more than happy to answer them if you want to email us your questions. We are also recording tonight's town hall, so we will have it posted on YouTube, hopefully within the next few days for anybody that might have missed it. So if you know an educator that wasn't able to make the call, have them hop over to our YouTube channel and find this webinar and get all this great information. All right, let's get started here. So we're going to start talking about the survey results. I created a survey on Google Docs. It's been about a month now and we blasted it out on Facebook and to our members through email. And this survey was geared towards educators to kind of gather information on what their year is going to look like. So we got information on the program location, the type of program, and some of the different issues that are being faced with educators right now in the world of the pandemic that we're living in. We were very happy to get 78 responses to the survey. So if you were one of those people that responded, thank you, we appreciate it. It's always good to have some insight on what's going on across the country. So I just have some statistical graphs here from the survey. This is the span of states that everybody was in. If everyone can see here, California was our most loved state for this survey. We had 14 participants from California, so thank you. But it looks like we had participants from almost every other state as well. Out of those 78 responses, about two-thirds of you guys are COTA-approved programs. So we have some educators that are not in COTA-approved programs right now, which is absolutely okay. We just kind of wanted to get a feel for who all was dealing with COTA issues as well. This was how your program has decided they will return in the fall and the majority of everybody looks like they will be going back in a hybrid style. So that's a combination of face-to-face classes and online learning. I'm guessing that most of that face-to-face will be for hands-on clinicals and labs. Are your anticipated enrollment rates affected? So over half of you determined that your enrollment rates for this year have been affected by the pandemic. And I'm sure that that is very widespread throughout the country right now with everything going on and the fear of being able to go back to school. And then graduation rates. Almost half of you guys said that your graduation rates would be affected by the pandemic. So we got some really good results from this survey and if you guys have anything to add to these results, you want to let us know specifically about your program or you have questions about these results, please let us know and we'll get some contact information out at the end. Next, I'm going to hand things over to Ms. Natalie.
All right, we are going to talk about changes in class size. And not everyone had a change or a drop in their class size. Some people actually have a waitlist, which is great to hear. We are going to do a quick poll on program demographics right now. And the first question is, are you affiliated with the COTA Dental Assisting Program? And is your program over 750 hours or under 750 hours if you're a COTA program? And then if you're not affiliated with a COTA Dental Assisting Program, is your program 750 hours or more or under? I believe we have a poll on a slide.
I put the poll out there.
All right. So those of you that are affiliated with the COTA program, if you could check the appropriate box, whether your program is over the 750 hours or under. And for those of you that are not with the COTA program, we'll have another slide almost identical that you can answer on. I'll give it a few more seconds. All right, so those of you that are affiliated with the COTA Dental Assisting Program, 84% of you have your program being comprised of 750 or more hours and 16% of you under 750 hours. Interesting information for us. All right, the next question, Sid. All right, this is for those of you that are not affiliated with a COTA Dental Assisting Program. Same question, is your program over 750 hours or is it under 750 hours? We'll give it a couple of seconds for everyone to respond. All right, let's flip to the results, please. All right, so 66% have their program consisted of 750 or more hours and 34% under 750 hours. Thank you, everyone, for participating in that. Next slide, please. Not sure who has the controls. Not me.
I do.
All right. It's kind of like me fighting with the dentist in the operator over the rear step, who gets to push down on the rear step.
It does look like in the audience questions, there was the question, how many people are in the webinar? And currently, it looks like we have 87 participants.
Pretty good number. Thank you. All right, next polling question. For those of you affiliated with a COTA Dental Assisting Program, what is typically your normal class size prior to the pandemic? 10 to 15 students, 16 to 20, or over 21 students? There'll also be a polling question for those of you not affiliated with a COTA accredited program. We'll take just a second. All right, so 29% have typically 10 to 15 students in their classes, 31% 16 to 20, and 40% have a normal class size of over 21 students. Next polling question. And these are for those that are not with a COTA accredited program. Again, asking about your normal class size. Is your class size 10 to 15, 16 to 20, or over 21 students?
And you had mentioned this was prior to the pandemic, Natalie?
Prior, yep, prior to the pandemic. Because we're going to open up discussion a little bit to talk about what your current class size is. All right, just a few seconds and we'll see the results. All right, 55% typically will have 10 to 15 students, 31% 16 to 20, and only 14 have class sizes over 21 students. Very interesting. Thank you.
Thanks, I too.
Next slide, please. I can share with you, the first time I ever taught, brand-new educator and I taught chairside one, both lecture and lab, or actually clinic, and I had 60 students in my lecture class, which was amazing to have at that time. This was back in 2006. Those were some long days for me.
You should see the next slide.
I don't see it yet.
Oh. So Natalie, with a classroom that size, where did you hold your lectures?
We had a lecture hall that could accommodate comfortably about 75.
Okay.
And so dental assisting was taught during the daytime hours and hygiene was taught in the evening and on weekends. And we tended to share that lecture room. Still waiting on the slide.
Okay, hold on just a second.
Got to love technology.
Do you see it?
Nope. There we go. All right, so we're going to talk about modifying the routines that we normally would have in education, starting with discussion on decreased class sizes, which I'm assuming is what most of you are facing, just with social distancing fears and perhaps just not, maybe not having enough applicants. Also going to just briefly discuss impacted funding and supplies. As all of us know, even those working in private or corporate practices, we're having a hard time getting certain supplies, especially PPE and disinfecting and sterilization supplies. And then also, especially for those of you with COTA programs, your faculty numbers could be impacted, especially if enrollment goes down or on the reverse side, if your enrollment goes up. And then impacted cohorts starting. I know some programs will start multiple times throughout the year and perhaps during this pandemic time, you may see a change where you may only hold one start to a class. So at this time, I would like to open up the discussion. If anyone would like to talk about how their programs were affected by decreased class sizes. Sarah, are you keeping an eye on the comment box or?
I am keeping an eye on the question box. I haven't seen anything come in yet.
All right. We'll give you guys a couple.
I know during one of our discussions, someone had mentioned that they actually had increased class sizes.
I believe that was Lisa. And that is actually the next slide. It's similar to this one, but just talking about the increase in class sizes. Lisa, would you like to share about the fact that you have a waitlist for your program?
We did have a waitlist this year, which is the first time in about five years. I live in a relatively rural area and we're just struggling to get 14 to 16 students every year. And this year, we were starting with 14, even though we do have a waitlist because of the size of the classroom and labs.
For those of you who may not know Lisa, she is from Arkansas. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Getting ready to see the bands of Hurricane Laura.
Yeah.
Lisa, any feedback or input as to why so many?
We have had a lot of dental assistants in this area that are not going back into the office and the demand has been pretty high for dental assistants. But they're really wanting the assistants to be trained now, more than just... Infection control is a real big thing for the offices and I've been approached to come in and review offices on their infection control procedures and give them pointers or corrections that they need. And so the dentists are recommending applicants go through the dental assisting program also.
Wonderful.
Daniel Clover had his hand up and his microphone is open now.
Go ahead, Daniel.
Yes, so I'm in the RDA EF2 program at La Melinda and our class didn't start virtual until the 20, sorry, the 20th of this month. We had been in school since July 7th. And it was, it was online. So the, and the EF2 is, you know, 410 hours. So what we're trying to do is make sure that we don't miss any lab because from now on, starting the 30th, we're going to have lab for eight hours and then on Tuesdays and Thursdays, it's lecture for four hours. So what I've noticed is, you know, they're taking up precautions. We have face masks, they take our temperature, they ask, do the questionnaire. And we also have cover for glasses, even if you wear glasses. So, I mean, you know, it's kind of extensive, but you got to take in consideration that with 20 students, you know, it's like really dangerous in one respect, but you know, there's not a lot you can do about it unless you take the precautions.
Right. Have you noticed a decrease in numbers that you would normally have for your class enrollment?
Not this year.
As a result of the pandemic?
No.
No? Okay. Good. That's great. I do know that there is an extreme shortage of dental assistants, not only throughout the United States, but it is a worldwide problem of having competent dental assistants. So it's not only those of us here in North America, meaning Canada and the US, but they are experiencing the same thing in other countries. And you know, as we know here in the US, you go to the state next door and you might not be able to do whatever duties you can do in your own state, similar to what other countries are like to. So we all practice the same, however, we're not allowed to do everything. So, well, thank you for sharing that, David. Sarah, anybody else? Or Daniel, sorry?
Judy Shannon, her microphone is now open.
Go ahead, Judy.
Hi, thank you for having this because it's very interesting. I have half a class size starting in a month. My applicants are down 40%. And I just find that there are, I get a call every day for an assistant. I just don't have enough people to fill the position. I am able to get my supplies, so to speak, but it's very difficult. And we're going back hybrid so that we can get our labs in because we are accredited and it's important, I'm going to run as many labs ahead of schedule than I, that I can before we possibly get shut off again. But in Massachusetts, they're being very strict and we're ahead of the curve as far as that's concerned.
I was just going to ask, where are you from? I can hear the East Coast accent.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's the end of the day. My accent is awful. I'm tired.
Well, thank you for sharing that.
I don't see anything else in the chat box.
All right, we'll go on to the next slide then, which is just whether or not there were increases in class size, which Lisa shared, you know, about the waitlist. We can go on to the next slide. All right, something to think about, what this pandemic can have on, not only what our current status is within educating dental assistants, but also the future. You know, how could it affect or impact dental assisting education? Not only the COTA accredited programs, but not COTA accredited programs. Also, the future of dental assisting profession. You know, we're already in a huge worldwide shortage. I'm from Minnesota and we've had an extreme shortage. It's got to be close to a decade now, where I went from a 50-an-hour-a-week management position to being clinical 40-plus hours a week. So tough on the body, but I love it. So what is the solution? Has anyone really thought about the future? Would love to hear any ideas, anybody is willing to share about the future of dental assisting education.
Natalie, I'd like to ask a question of all of our participants right now. Lisa, and I think you touched on this just a little bit. Are you seeing dentists and dental offices reaching out to you as instructors asking for more educated dental assistants than what you've seen in the past? I believe what we've seen a lot of, you know, in the past is, oh, we can bring them into our office and we can train them. But Lisa mentioned that they are looking for more qualified, competent dental assistants. Are other instructors on the call finding the same situation? Melanie Randolph. Melanie Randolph, her microphone is unmuted.
Hello. Hi. Hi, I was going to answer before that I'm from Sacramento City College and we are not, Sacramento, California, and we are not actually being able to take a new cohort this year at all because of COVID. So there, we have no class for this next year. And on top of that, our students from last year were not able to come back and finish. So they're still in limbo until sometime next year. So that, yeah, that's where we are. Sorry, where is my brain? What was the last question? Oh, the shortage. Our shortage is, in California, is tremendous. And I think what's happening in Northern California is that we're actually seeing the opposite, is that we're going to less education and more on-the-job training because of the shortage. And more and more certification programs opening up that are not necessarily even with a school. So there's a lot more training going on that's not official education because of the shortage.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? The next one, who I've... Okay, Priscilla Danarski, she needs to unmute herself. No, she's unmuted. Okay. Priscilla Danarski?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Again.
All right. So I am in New Jersey. My program is not accredited, is not COTA. It's accredited, but not a COTA accredited. And I've actually have more students coming in now than ever, like ever, since I started teaching. It's the biggest amount, my, all my classes are full until my next class that I have availability. We have a new class, like, because it's continuous cycle. So we have a new class every seven weeks. So all of my classes are filled until December now for the day class. For the night class, it's only twice a year, so it's still filling up. More and more people coming to the, to the school to try to get in. More than ever, I've never seen this. It's, it's never been so high. And then extremely high demand. And now we're seeing a lot of the dentists offering more money, which I believe is what's going to be ended up happening with the profession. The part of like having to have education, I see that the hands-on part of that makes sense, but I feel like because of the shortage, they're going to have to end up upping up the pay. And then because of that, they're going to start requiring a little bit more education or at least like formal training. So I think that the students that are going to school right now or have finished school not too long ago are going to have an advantage as far as that. A lot of assistants quit in New Jersey. There's a, like, we're getting like calls for 20, 30 different offices, like every week, asking for people and we don't have enough to send.
Wow. That's actually great.
Yeah, we're seeing the same thing in Pennsylvania. I do the hiring for my office and right now there are 42 jobs on Indeed looking for dental assistants. And so as an office, trying to compete with that is just about impossible. But no, I agree with you that there's definitely a need out there. Lindsay Wisnerzki?
Yes. Close enough.
Close enough. Sorry. I am with National Dental Academy of Wisconsin. And here in Wisconsin, we, I'm getting three, four, or five calls a day wanting dental assistance, but then our practices that host our clinicals are hesitant to have extra students in their offices. So, that's kind of one of the issues that we're running into. One of our biggest locations, the doctors basically told us, ah, I just, I just don't think we should have any extra bodies in the office right now. So, one of the things we're working through as educators is just trying to find other places that will welcome our students, because there are definitely many, many places that are in need of good educated dental assistants. So, just kind of wanted to share what we're going through in our state.
Wonderful, and I think we will be discussing that during Robin's presentation portion. So, that'll be exciting to hear what other people have to share on that. Thank you.
Well, and just in the interest of time, it's already at 7:30, so I think we're going to move on. And I apologize to anybody that had their hand raised and we didn't get to them. But if you would like to discuss this more with us, like I said earlier, there will be some contact information at the end of this presentation. So, send us all your emails, we want to hear it all.
If we get enough interest there, we can always do this again.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we're very glad to have everybody on and having this discussion, because it's an important one to have.
Yeah. It's our future.
It is our future, and we appreciate all the hard work that everyone's doing. All right, next we'll be speaking on hands-on experience during the remote learning that everyone is dealing with, and that will be Ms. Lisa Childers. Lisa, are you still on with us?
I'm still on. Okay, hi, everyone. I, as a COTA program director, hands-on experience is very important for our COTA accreditation, but not only is it important for that, it's important for these dentists. And with us, we are, we're not remote learning yet, we are face-to-face programs still. But we are having to develop plans to go remote. And our plans, you know, we have to look at how do we provide this hands-on experience during remote learning? Our plan is, is to bring the students in, much like a lot of you that participated in the survey that Sarah shared the results with us, are doing a hybrid program, you know, bringing in small groups for the labs. And that's what we're, we've reduced our lab size and we do two groups in labs. So, it's doubled our lab time as instructors, but it's been really nice working with the much smaller groups. During a complete remote, I developed a plan so that my students, I got permission so that my students could still come in. We're going to be wearing our personal protection equipment, which will include our disposable gowns, our masks, our safety glasses, even if we wear glasses, we have safety glasses, Googles that we use, and my, sorry, I'm going through my list, face shield. We'll have our face shield, our mask, our Googles. And we do have disposable gowns that my students will be wearing this semester particularly. Like I said, we are doing small groups. And then if we go completely remote, we're looking at developing a toolkit. I got these ideas from other program directors that are remote right now, but they have developed toolkits. They are videoing the demonstration. And then the students will check out a toolkit. Not every competency can be done that way, but the basics can, such as how to put on the PPE the proper way, what is proper film placement in x-rays with the dentitis forms, transferring instruments. I checked into Walmart and you can get a mouth mirror and explorer at Walmart for $3.99, much cheaper than I could order them from a supplier for my class. So, we're having them video themselves. Our plan is, is to have them video themselves for the check-offs. We are, we continue to use Evolve website for instrument identification. You know, I'm kind of like the rest of the educators, this is new territory, so we're just, we brainstorm and we're trying. And I'm trying to open this up for ideas for us to share, because I used some ideas from the last town hall, and I'm hoping this time to learn new ideas.
Lisa, check out the Dollar Store. We just found mouth mirror, explorer, tongue scraper, whole kit for, it has five different instruments in it for a dollar at the Dollar Store.
Oh, really? I will, because I, you know, I'm looking at developing kits, because there's just some things I'm not going to be able to send out, you know, impressions are going to have to be done in person, that kind of stuff, you know? Taking x-rays, that's mandatory, you know? They're going to have to take x-rays before they're allowed to take them on a live patient. Any questions or ideas?
Barbara Bonner?
We are currently right now just at a completely online situation. We do YouTube videos and lectures, PowerPoints, but as far as hands-on, we haven't been allowed to have any students in doing any hands-on.
Is your school completely closed for anybody on the campus?
Yes, the only ones that are allowed on campus are the teachers. And we do have smart boards, which we're able to teach things like charting and things on our smart boards that the students can learn with that. But it's still, there's no, there's no exchange for not seeing face-to-face students. You have to, you have to teach what face-to-face.
Yes.
For most of the information.
Any feedback on when you might be able to go to face-to-face?
We're hoping right now January, but it's up in the air. We're kind of like Sacramento, where everything is closed up and nobody is saying anything about letting us open. So, don't know. This is my 29th year teaching, my 45th year in the field, and I've never seen anything like it.
That is true. Thank you.
Anyone else, Sid? Judy Shannon. Judy Shannon.
Hi, Judy. I like the idea about a toolkit, because I was thinking, if I have such a small amount of students, then I could, I have enough typos, I could send them home with a typo. And they could make up their own videos with everything like that, as far as transferring of instruments, even with someone else in the household. I find that the students are very inventive when you ask them to do something. And actually, I, I learned quite a bit from it and enjoy it when they get to show everything. So, I just wanted to put in my two cents. That's all. I think that toolkit is an awesome idea, and I'm definitely going to the Dollar Store tomorrow. I have three within a 10-mile radius, and I'm going to hit them big.
I'm going to hit them too, and if I can get some extras, if you want to, send me an email at R-R-I-X-S-E at ADAAUSA.org. I will start collecting them and send them out as I'm able.
Can you give me your email again? It's R?
And Sid, if you're able to, if you're able to type that into the answer box, that would be great, Sid or Sarah.
I was able to get a thermometer, temperature check, you know, the ultraviolet one, at the Dollar Store. You have to ask for it. They actually had them. And I found that Ocean State, for those in the Northeast area, also has them, but you had to ask. So, that was good.
I think it's a great idea that you're getting your students involved in asking for their input, because you're really a big stakeholder in all of this right now. And so, you know, looking to them for possible solutions is a great idea.
Yeah, they've been pretty good about it. But I graduated, all my students are all working, so I'm working on next year's class. I'm hoping they're as enthusiastic as last year's, so we'll see.
That's great.
Awesome, thank you so much for all of the input, you guys. We are going to move on to the next topic, just so we don't run out of time. I'm afraid with so much discussion that we might. But, you know, I'm willing to stay later if anyone else is. I'll keep talking.
You know me, I always like to talk, so that's not a problem.
So, our next topic is infection control and then student-staff safety with the pandemic going on. And I didn't change the, the name on this slide. It's supposed to be me.
Freaked out.
That was my typo. So, I just wanted to share with everybody, there is some new guidance from CDC on how to deal with things during COVID-19. If you go to this link, which I'm sure you guys are all very familiar with, it is the most up-to-date COVID guidance for dental settings. And there are some big changes in what we've been doing for years and years and years. The first big change is that they're recommending respirators and face shields be used for any aerosol generating procedures. Okay? Before COVID, respirators were not really a thing in dentistry. We wore surgical masks, we wore our goggles, and, you know, maybe a face shield if it was a really big surgery and kind of getting messy. But respirators were not very commonly used in dentistry, especially in private practice. The next one is making sure all of your employees at all times have some sort of face covering. So, even front desk, wearing their cloth-based mask, just to help protect everybody in the office. Even your assistants and clinical staff, when they're not in the operatory and just, you know, cleaning or sterilizing or whatever, should be wearing those face coverings as well. And then adding or upgrading your ventilation systems to help filter out air and maintain that COVID-free workplace. You know, there are a lot of different recommendations on that and how to make it work. And then a big one that CDC put out was a cleaning calculator. And they did put out a recommendation to just let a room sit for 15 minutes after a procedure before cleaning. That was a hard and fast 15 minutes, just let it sit. Since then, that has been redacted, and they put out this cleaning calculator to determine that wait time. So, it depends on the size of your operatory and your airflow systems and everything else you have going on, how long you should be waiting. Now, those are just general guidelines for dentistry when you're working in private practice. See if this will go forward. There we go. With, with OSHA guidance, OSHA requires anytime anybody is using respirator, they have to have a written respiratory protection plan in place. And providers have to have a medical questionnaire filled out and reviewed by a medical doctor, and you need to have initial fit testing done. This written plan should be kept with the rest of your OSHA binder. And I'm not sure how this will play out as a part of an educational facility and what requirements COTA is going to put into play with this. But it is a good thing to keep in mind that you may have to put something like this together for you and your students in your program. And I do have a poll question for you guys. Have you considered adding fit testing and the respiratory protection plan into your curriculum? So, just take a few seconds and answer this question for me, if you would, please. Give it just about five more seconds, and then we'll close out the poll. Awesome, so it looks like about half of you have already considered adding that fit testing into your curriculum, which is great. If you haven't considered it yet and you need some guidance, there is a lot of guidance on the OSHA website about how to implement that written respiratory protection plan. And if you need additional guidance, you guys can feel free to reach out to me. I have a template that is more geared towards dentistry instead of hospital-based. And I don't know, Sid, you can feel free to put my email into the chat as well. For some reason, my chat feature isn't working well. And if anybody wants that template, I will be more than happy to send it out. I know I've shared it with Robin and Natalie and, you know, a whole bunch of people. And could we possibly go back to the slides as well, Sid?
I will let you know, it's a really awesome template. So, if you're looking for something like that for a respiratory program, please reach out to Sarah. It is well, well-written, well-thought-out, lots of great information.
Yeah, and that template is actually, it is made to be a fillable template. So, you could potentially just input your office or school name and, you know, fill in some stuff, and it is a standalone plan itself. So, hopefully that will help some people out. Let's see, my slide isn't going for it. There we go. Oh. Okay, so I want to open it up a little bit to some discussion here for maybe a minute. We can maybe take a couple of people. What do you think would be some of your barriers for fit testing, having that in your curriculum? Do we have anybody, Sid?
Not yet, I don't see anyone.
I know one barrier I've heard of quite a bit is just the availability of someone to come in and do fit testing. People are having a hard time finding that. And I know everybody has been really crazy with COVID going on, but usually your local public health department can point you in the right direction, whether it's a local hospital. Sometimes sales reps are trained to do that. So, you know, if you have that barrier, reach out to public health, that's their job to help.
I do have some people who've raised their hands.
Okay.
Trying to get the mic unmuted here. Okay. Can't get this mic unmuted. Okay. Eric, can I take control of Timmy's? Okay, Erica Kuvas?
Hi.
Hi, Erica.
This is my first time joining, and all the, this whole presentation has been very helpful. And I just had a question as to, I know Sarah mentioned that she had more or less of a template that she could send out. Did you, do you have like an email address where we could send you an email? Or how do we contact you?
Yeah, absolutely. So, Sid, no, it looks like Natalie put my email in the chat, but maybe it just went to organizers.
It did.
Sid, can you add it in so everybody can see it? We're, we're really needy right now, Sid, I'm sorry.
No, not, not a problem. This is the one you want, then, Sarah S. Stream.
Yeah, so Erica, feel free to send me an email if you want that template. I'd be more than happy to share it with anybody that wants it.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Did we have anyone else with questions?
Tina Sprague. Yes, I, the barrier that we have is getting the fit tests and then getting Yes, the barrier that we have is getting the fit tests and then getting enough masks of varying sizes.
Yeah, that is going to continue to be a barrier, unfortunately. With our PPE shortages, just getting the supplies is going to be difficult. And I think that actually leads into some of my next slides here. But, you know, with... Can I click through to the next slide? Oh, there we go. Okay, so yeah, so prices are rising because of the availability of the base products that they use to manufacture all of our PPE over in China. And so, you know, we've seen increases in masks, gloves, gowns, face shields of up to 600%, even more. And people just aren't able to get those. But I still want to encourage everybody, even if you maybe can't get respirators, like you need to be able to supply your whole program for an extended period of time, to still have somebody come in and do fit testing, even if you can get a few masks. And then students have already been fit tested, they've already had that questionnaire done. And then when they're ready to go out into the workforce, they can say, yes, I've done this. You know, I have my initial fit testing done. Even if you're not able to use respirators on campus all the time. I still think it would be a very big benefit. Another product availability issue that people are having are disinfectant wipes. The wipes themselves are made of the same stuff that Meltblown. So, you know, just manufacturing the wipes, the paper towel part of your wipes, is becoming an issue. So a lot of manufacturers are not able to get wipes out, but they can get, you know, the five-gallon jugs of liquid. And we still want to be cognizant of not spraying, right, because the spray is bad. But in dire times, you could potentially make your own wipes if you have to. You know, if you just can't get wipes anywhere else. So, you know, there are, I have a thing I'll post in the Facebook group. I may have posted it. That was just kind of a conversion table of what, like what a 32-ounce spray bottle of liquid disinfectant translates over into so many wipes? And what a gallon translates into into wipes? So I'll try to find that and post it on the Facebook group again. And then making sure we are talking about the extended use for PPE right now. With such a shortage, we need to make sure that we are getting that out to the students, that they know it is okay right now, because we're in this pandemic situation, to do extended use of PPE. But we need to make sure that we're telling them the right way to do it. And, you know, the right parts of PPE that you can use for extended use. Obviously, we don't want to extended use our gloves, because that's disgusting. But if you only have one respirator for the day, there is a proper way to wear it all day long. So. And I am going to actually, just really quickly, student and staff safety. Make sure everyone's wearing your masks while you're in class, unless you are having some sort of lab where you're a patient. And then maintaining six-foot distance whenever you can, practicing hand hygiene appropriately and often. And then promoting safe practices anywhere you're at. So even in social gatherings, making sure your students are staying safe off of campus. I'm going to hand this over to Robin. We're running out of time quickly. I apologize, Robin. I talked too much.
No, not at all. It's good information.
Yeah, let's see. Oh, there we go. Okay, so Robin, take it away.
All right, so I'm going to talk a little bit about finding clinical sites in a pandemic world. And I decided that I was going to kind of come at this from the perspective of the dentist. So because I work closely with dentists in my area, I reached out to find out what some of their concerns were, which I believe you're going to find that, you know, they coincide with the challenges that you're seeing. So the poll question is, are you having issues finding clinical sites for your students to go to? Yes or no? And I will let you know that we had an extern during the time when our office actually shut down for nine weeks to all but emergencies. And so they unfortunately weren't able to be doing their externship with us during the time that we weren't there. So I understand the challenges that you're facing in your programs. All righty. So guys, you guys know my vision. Can you read those numbers for me?
Sure. It is a yes of 38% and no of 62%.
Well, that's excellent. I'm glad to hear that. All right, if we can move on to the next slide. So the first thing we're going to talk about are the challenges. And I kind of broke them up into four different areas. And I'll just keep talking, because I can remember pretty, I believe I can remember it for the most part. And the first one that we run into is that some dentists have chosen to retire and not reopen their practices at all. So you're going to see a reduction in the number of offices that are even available. And then many practices that are open, they've done so in a limited capacity due to the changes in patient and team safety protocols. So there's concern over lack of infection control knowledge by your extern intern to understand the need for these changes and how to perform them. So that's a challenge that you're going to be facing. And then the third, our practices are finding it difficult to staff their offices, you know, as team members decide not to return. And with much of the responsibility for training your students falling on the team, the team member, offices are reluctant to offer themselves as clinical sites due to a lack of available staff. And then the fourth is with the scarcity of necessary PPE, some offices are concerned with utilizing those resources on a student that's coming in to do their clinical in the office. So if we go on to the next slide, I really would like to hear from you. Are any of these appropriate for your program? Are they the ones you're running into? Are there others? I'd like to hear your feedback. Sid, I'm going to actually have you flip back to that site now that we know we're in the discussion. That slide, just so people can see what the different challenges are and whether or not they have any additional ones. Anybody have anything you'd like to include?
Ed K. Sloan? Go ahead. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I am a non-COTA school, and we're seeing the same issues. I have about 15 students. I have many students who cannot go on externship because the offices are not willing to take them. And it sounds like the same reasons that you have listed here. So it's been very challenging. We have a lot of students kind of in limbo because they're done with their classroom training, but cannot move on. But then there's also offices who are begging for assistance. So I'm like, I'm not sure, you know, how to fix the problem, I guess.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Barbara Bonner? Go ahead, Barbara.
But, okay. We haven't been able to put any students out at all since last March. So we have students that are waiting to go out and that need to finish their clinical training. But we, I have offices that call us daily, that call me daily and say, when are you going to have students for us? We need students. So I don't think we're going to have a problem putting them in when we're allowed to.
When you're allowed to, okay. All right.
We're just not, we can't do it, you know?
Got it. Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Judy Shannon? Go ahead, Judy.
I didn't realize I had clipped my thing. I don't have a problem. A lot of my offices that, my students who needed extern, they use the students as a period of time, and then they hire them afterwards. So I was able to put my students in offices that were willing to do the externship and then hire them, and it was great. And I get so many calls, and I wish I had the students for them, but I don't. So I can have a problem.
We actually did the same thing in our office. We ended up hiring our students. Anyone else?
I do have some questions in the question box.
Okay.
This one says, "Some of us attending teacher-dental assisting in vocational high schools."
Okay. I'm not sure what that is.
Yeah, I don't know. This one says, "A COTA program requires 900 instructional hours." Okay.
They do, for whoever posed that question, they do require a little over 900, but 300 of those hours, which would drop it down to 600 face-to-face hours.
Okay. Next question, "Is this for lab or lecture?" Lecture sizes, 24 students. Lab sizes are limited to 12.
I think it'll depend on the space of your facility, how many people you can have in a lecture or a lab and still be able to safely conduct the class.
Okay. Priscilla Danarski said, "I actually filled all my future classes. Extremely high demand in New Jersey."
Wonderful.
Awesome.
This person has left, but she said, "We have pushed our start date back by a month." And this person has also left, and she said, "We are not being allowed to enter a new cohort this year."
Oh, okay.
And the person also who left, she commented, "I went from 20 to 6 as of now." Normally accept 12. Another person said, "Normally accept 12 students, accepted 14 this year, and have an alternate list."
Great. Awesome.
Sid, could you, if you advanced to the two slides? Well, what I've done next is I've kind of taken each of those four challenges and suggested some solutions. So in the one where the offices have not decided to reopen, because the dentists have decided to retire, if offices have closed, the solution might be just to broaden your search for new offices. And I realize that's like a duh question, but that is one thing that we might have to start doing is expanding our search for offices, especially given the shortage, maybe using that as a way to reach out to offices. The second one, "Concerns over lack of knowledge and understanding of the changes in infection control protocols can be addressed with a brief synopsis of the curriculum taught and the focus placed on emphasizing the importance of infection control and prevention education to your program and in your classroom." And Lisa, this one came to mind because I was thinking of our conversation the other night, where you talked about how you really are focusing on infection control, because it's so important right now. So if you focus on it and you emphasize it and you share that information with the offices that they're going into, I believe that may overcome that challenge a little bit about their concerns over infection control. And then number three, pointing out the preparedness of your students as interns or externs may be a way to alleviate the concerns over training and potentially a way to help the practice find a new team member. Number of you have mentioned that tonight, that that's been a way that you've been able to get your students into sites. And this one is a little more challenging, but in conversation with an educator, they shared the possibility of providing PPE for the intern and extern as they go into the sites. And that may be a way to alleviate the concerns of the offices that don't have the resources to extend out to a student. And one thing I can let you know, as the one that orders all of the supplies for my office, it used to be one or two phone calls, and I've placed all my orders for the week or every two weeks, depending upon how I'm ordering. Now it can be 10 to 12 phone calls that I'm making, looking for different supply companies, you know, asking questions of different people that, Sarah is someone that put me in contact with an individual that was able to help provide KN95 masks for our office. So it's just really a matter of, you're going to have to broaden your search for PPE. But that may be a way, if you can supply that for your students, of getting into different offices who have concerns over their resources. So any other ideas or solutions from anyone?
I think another barrier that some may be facing is that offices don't want to have any legal responsibility if anything would happen to a student while they're in their office.
That's very true. And Sid, anyone's hands up for questions being asked? I know it's a little past our time. I appreciate you guys' patience and a lot of information here. But we'd love to hear your feedback later on. If you, Sarah and I both gave you our email addresses, we'd love to hear from you.
John Brewster?
Go ahead, John.
Hi, I'm from Citrus College in Southern California. I had my hand up earlier, but I don't know if my computer wasn't working or not. But we just went back this week to hybrid, so we're back on ground for labs. But the intern sites, we had a lot that were really wanting them, but one of the challenges was on a few of the offices was physical space. You know, if they have a smaller office and they're trying to physically stay, you know, apart as much as possible, it was just, just became too crowded. So that was one of the reasons. And I do have a handful of students that couldn't come back or did not want to come back because of being scared. And I have a handful of pregnant ones, so we know what they were doing during this whole break, but they didn't want to come back because of the fear of being pregnant. So it did affect my enrollment. But anyway, back to clinical sites. We had only had a couple that didn't want the students back. But then to counteract that, we had a few that actually asked if they can have more than one. So that helped, and they're all out, and this was their first week, and it's gone really well so far. So fingers crossed it keeps going.
That's wonderful. If you think about it, that is definitely a challenge, because I know just for my staff in my office, trying to find places for everyone to have lunch, because everybody, you know, all 10 to 12 of us can't join in the lunchroom anymore. You know, it's limited to four, so adding on a student, that could definitely be a challenge. Thank you.
In the questions, "Is anyone having students sign a COVID liability release?"
That's a really good question.
Yeah, I hadn't even thought about it. Is there anyone out there that's doing that?
We are at my office with our externs as well as our patients.
Interesting. So you're actually having your patients sign a liability form to come into the office?
Right.
Wow.
That would be one good way to mitigate that liability.
Yeah, I hadn't thought of that. It's what you get when you work for a lawyer. All right. Any feedback from anyone on the call?
This is Judy Shannon. I seem to be talking a lot tonight, but...
Oh, that's okay.
My college is asking them to review and sign a release, and it's in my handbook, so they are also signing in my handbook. They have read it and agree with it, along with all the other policies in the college.
All right.
Hey, I'm trying to... unmute a person here, and I can't seem to do it. They're self-muted here. Yeah, let's see if I can, okay. See if we can get this person.
Is it me?
Heather?
Yes.
Heather?
Hi. Yeah, I have a fun last name. I'm in La Puente, California, and we're doing hybrid. All of our students, including myself, we've all had to sign a COVID waiver. Actually, two of them. When the students that were in our last cohort, when they went back to their externship offices in the summer, they all had to sign the COVID waiver. they all had to sign the COVID waiver as well. All my students completed. They all have jobs. And I've had 10 offices call me this week looking for assistance and I have nobody.
Wow. Heather, I have a question for you. Would you be willing to share that waiver with me so I could take a look at it? It doesn't have to have any, you know, any name on it or anything. Would you be willing to send me a copy?
I can. It's a paper version and it's actually at my work and I won't be back there till Tuesday, but I can share it, yes.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
No problem.
All right, anyone else?
Manolita. Oh, she's self-muted. She can unmute herself. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, yes. Yeah, I'm also in the program that is not going to approve. Yeah, we're giving our students, it's like a liability kind of paper that we made that they need to sign before they can come into the clinic. So it's like a waiver that we're saying. And, and even for our students' patient, when they come, they have to sign some paper that we're saying. I'm saying in the paper that, yeah, we need to do a six-foot social distancing, but because in dentistry is impossible to do it because we need to look at their mouth, we need to work in their mouth. We're just making sure that they understand that and they have to sign an initial, that paper.
Okay. I'm curious, for those of you who are having them sign waivers, your students sign waivers, have you had anyone refuse to sign the waiver and decide not to be a part of the program? No?
No.
No, okay, all right. Interesting. All right, well, it's about 9:12 on the East Coast, anyway. Are there any last-minute questions anyone would like to ask?
Sid, if you could click forward to the next slide, my clicker is not working. Just so we have that contact information up. And then both mine and Robin's emails are also in the chat. So if anybody has questions for either of us, feel free to reach out. We would love to hear from you. I will get the Respiratory Protection Plan templates out to anybody that wants them. Just give me some time here. I'll get them out, you know, soon. Couple days.
I also unmuted Dawn Brewster. She has had her hand up for quite a while.
Oh, sure, Dawn.
Oh, it's okay. I was just answering when you were asking who, who signed waivers. So we have one waiver that all the students signed to come onto the campus to do their pre-clinical. And then we have a different waiver that we had them sign for their clinical sites and clinical rotations. And Robin, if you'd like me to send you what we have, I'd be happy to do so.
That'd be fabulous. I'd love to see it. Thank you so much.
Sure. And we didn't have anybody refuse to sign it, but like I said earlier, we had a handful that were just overall not willing to get back into dentistry right now. So I don't know if it's directly related to that waiver or not, but, you know, we had a few not come back.
Okay. Let us know too, if you wouldn't be willing, I mean, if you would be willing to send us out emails. Would you like to do this again next month? And there's a lot of good information. Things are going to continue to change. So if you'd like us to do this again, please feel free to share that information with us. And if you have other questions, maybe other areas that you'd like to discuss, you know, you will find that Sarah, Natalie and I and Lisa, we love to talk about this stuff. We love to, you know, bounce ideas off of one another and hear your input and your feedback. You know, that's why we're here and we do what we do. So if you're interested in having us do this more frequently, please just let us know that.
Absolutely. We would be more than happy to come back.
All right, well, everyone, it's Thursday evening. For those of you who have Fridays off, I hope you have a early, great early start to your weekend. If not, have a safe day tomorrow. Be well, be safe. And just remember, ADAA is here to represent you as a dental educator, to represent your students as they go out and become dental assistants. We really want to make sure that we are meeting your needs. And for those of you who may not be aware, ADAA has issued a call to action for mandatory infection control education because we believe this is so important. So we would love for you to support us with that call to action. And, and just, you know, we've given you our email addresses. Let us know how we can help you. Let us know how we can help your students. And just know that we are here for you. Thanks, everybody. Have a great.
Thank you, everybody.
And hopefully talk to you soon.
Good night.
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 Good night.